Good morning. Welcome to today's meeting of the Suffolk Health Scrutiny Committee. I am councillor Heike Sova and I will be chairing the meeting today. This meeting is being broadcast live and is available to watch on the council's website whilst we are in public session. A recording of the meeting will also be available for subsequent viewing. Members of the public and the press may record, film, photograph or broadcast this meeting when the public and the press are not lawfully excluded. Provided due courtesy and respect are shown to others in attendance in line with the council's published guidance. We are not expecting a fire drill today. In the event of the alarm sounding, please leave the chamber by following the fire exit signs which are over there at the rear of the chamber and follow the fire evacuation instructions which are also can be found on page four of the agenda. Can I remind you please to speak clearly and directly into the microphones and avoid placing things such as paper or IT equipment in front of the microphone as this will affect the sound quality on the live broadcast and in the chamber. Can I also ask that you turn off all your mobiles and laptops please and if you haven't done already so. The other thing is should we hear a phone or the sound of a laptop or any other gadgets, you will have to pay five pounds into the chairs charity fund. Thank you. At last, I would like you not to use acronyms please. For the clarity of the meeting, please do avoid acronyms. Use the whole phrases and the words please. Thanks. We are coming to agenda item one: election of the vice chairman. Are there any nominations for vice chairman please?
Yes.
Excellent. We have, okay. Is there a second please?
I'd like to second that nomination.
Thank you very much. Are there any other nominations? Nope. Is the committee content to agree the nomination of Inga Lockington as vice chair by general affirmation? Thank you very much. Congratulations Inga. We are coming to item number two. Questions by the public or called public participation. Susan, do we have any applications to ask a question at today's meeting?
There haven't been any public questions received for today's meeting.
Thank you very much. Item number three on the agenda: apologies for absence and substitutions. Susan, do we have any apologies please?
We have received apologies from councillor Keith Robinson who is being substituted by councillor Ryan Harvey who has not yet arrived and also we have received apologies from councillor Andrew Martin.
Thank you very much. Item number four: declarations of interest and dispensations. Are there any declarations and dispensations by the committee members please?
I'd like to declare that I am chair of the Patient Participation Group for Cardinal Medical Practice and that's a tongue twister.
Thank you very much councillor Shaw. Councillor Rao?
I'll declare an interest that I work for Suffolk Art Link and Suffolk Community Libraries or Suffolk County Council but the Suffolk Community Libraries part, both of which are involved with providing activities for social prescribing.
Thank you very much councillor Rao and I have to declare my interests which are dispensations as I am the governor of the West Suffolk Hospital and I work as a nurse in Adambrokes Hospital. All right, let's move on to item number five: minutes of the previous meeting. Is the committee happy that the minutes be signed as a record, as a true correct record? All happy? Thank you very much. Item number six. This is an agenda which is provided to the committee as a briefing rather than a topic of scrutiny please. However, there will be an opportunity at the end of the presentation so that members can ask any questions of clarification. It regards the NHS transition update. May I hand over to Mr Watson please?
Thank you Chair. So, good morning. My name is Richard Watson. I'm Deputy Chief Executive for Suffolk and North East Essex Integrated Care Board. So we're the major organisation across Suffolk and North East Essex that commissions the majority of healthcare services for the local population. So at the last meeting, our chief exec Ed Garrett gave an update on some of the changes that are taking place which will affect our organisation and all the other 41 integrated care boards across England. Just as a recap to start before I give you the update, you may be aware that the Secretary of State for Health and Social Care announced that NHS England, which is the main arms-length body that oversees and runs the NHS, has been abolished and it's been integrated or its functions back into the Department of Health and Social Care. So they're going through a major process now over the next year or so of making that happen. But at the same time as that, the Secretary of State also announced a reduction in the operating costs, effectively the day-to-day running costs of our organisation. So the 42 integrated care boards have been asked to reduce effectively their operating costs from somewhere between 27 and 60% depending on the existing scale of the organisation. So as you can imagine, that is a significant reduction and impact on the way in which those organisations can run and operate. So following that announcement in March, there has been a national reference group chaired by Dr Penny Dash who's the chair of NHS England, which I've had the fortune of being part of as I'm working also in the national team at the moment on part-time secondment. And we pulled together a group of chief execs and chairs of ICB, of integrated care boards and others to try and work out how we could respond to this effectively and start to take out that degree of reduction. So you'll see that's mentioned in the briefing document, something called the ICB blueprint. So effectively that is a short document that sets out what the national expectation is, the purpose of an integrated care board and then starts to set out some of the functions or the things that ICBs should do and some of the areas that over time integrated care boards may be able to stop doing. So it's not guidance, it's a helpful reference document to support the 42 integrated care boards to try and work through how they can make such a significant reduction in the way that they currently operate. So coming locally to Suffolk and North East Essex Integrated Care Board, like many, we are at a population scale of around a million. So there is a broad range from about a million to nearly just over three million across the 42 ICBs. So for some of the ICBs, they believe that they can make that level of reduction while remaining the same, effectively covering the same geography. So as example Manchester, one of the biggest integrated care boards, they're looking to reduce down their operating costs but effectively still staying covering Manchester, not looking to partner with another organisation. For us, as we're at the smaller end of around a million, we've gone through a process where we feel that the best option for us is we actually look to work with our neighbouring integrated care boards. So as you've seen in the paper, I think Ed spoke at the previous meeting, the outlined decision that we're looking to make is that Suffolk and North East Essex Integrated Care Board will not exist in its current form from the first of April 2026. So effectively we are looking to break up the existing arrangement and for Suffolk, so obviously which I'm sure is most of interest to the committee, Suffolk and Norfolk, our neighbouring integrated care board, will be hopefully coming together. So we'll be forming a new organisation effectively that oversees the operating of the NHS for the county of Suffolk and the county of Norfolk. And then for North East Essex, which is part of our current geography, that will go into a new integrated care board that will cover Greater Essex. So there's a number of factors that were behind that recommendation. The major one is financial, to be frank. So we are, as I said, one of the smaller ICBs. We don't believe we can take out that level of reduction without partnering and coming together on a bigger scale so that we can start to make some of those headcount efficiencies that we need to make. The other reason is that it becomes coterminous with the new combined authority. So for Greater Essex and Norfolk and Suffolk, we will then mirror the new combined authority geography, which there are some synergies with the new responsibilities that the mayors appointed will have, particularly around some of the public health agenda. So there is a logic to actually running the same geographies across the new combined mayoral authority. Even though we are looking to potentially move to that arrangement, there is a lot more work to do over the next six months to bring that about. So in terms of the timeline, the national team have set out that they expect integrated care boards to reduce their operating costs in time for the first of April next year, which is very pacey as you can imagine. So we were told in March, we've had to go through a significant exercise to look at our strategic options as I've described and we've got to practically now redesign a complete new structure for the new organisations of Greater Essex and Norfolk and Suffolk within the context of taking out a significant number of posts or headcount reduction. So we are looking to move to a full merger from the first of April. Again, we've got to make a formal application and then go through a process and through that we'd have to close down the existing organisation and reform into the new one and go through a significant consultation with our staff base to effectively work with them on what the new proposed structure could be, again within the context of taking out a significant proportion of the current operating costs. What I should say at the outset is, which hopefully hasn't confused the committee, is we are not reducing the commissioning budgets for the NHS. So we spend about 2.4 billion pounds per annum on NHS services in Suffolk and North East Essex. So this is the running cost budget for the, so to run the organisation, we have a separate budget that pays for all of us and our colleagues to effectively oversee the commissioning of the NHS and that money and then the performance and the quality management. So it's the budget around the operating cost for the organisation that we are being asked to reduce, not the commissioning spend across primary care, mental health, whatever else. But not to underestimate, you know, the significant challenge that that puts on us and obviously on a human level, the impact that that's having on all members of staff who at the moment haven't got certainty about their own future within the organisation. So I'll leave it there Chair, that just gives you a sense of where we're up to. I should have mentioned also on a linked point, you've seen trailed in the media that the national NHS 10-year plan is likely to come out later this week. So it may well be the committee would like us to come back later stage to give our reflections because that's going to be far-reaching as you've probably seen some of it trailed. I've not seen it yet either, so I'll be reading it for the first time when you all will later this week next. But I think that would probably be an interesting topic of conversation as it will also impact us from what I'm seeing into the committee as well.
Thank you very much Mr Watson. That would be absolutely great if we could see you again because there are so many changes coming on and nobody of us knows exactly how it's going to be. Members of the committee, any questions? Yep, Thompson, councillor Thompson please.
Presumably, we want one committee, one health and scrutiny committee because you don't want to go out twice and answer questions twice to two committees, do you? So is that right?
I don't mind to be honest councillor, so at the moment we do that already. So because we cover North East Essex, we also attend the Essex Health Scrutiny Committee. I think it's probably out of my remit to determine what the best arrangements are for local government in terms of the committee structure. So I'll be guided by what the government or yourselves come up with.
Would you be hopeful that we made a joint, made the committee integrate the committees?
So I think, so I honestly don't mind because we already go to a vast array of different committees and different place-based arrangements and my colleagues who are going to talk to you in a little bit around social prescribing is a very place-based function. What I would say is we have had joint sessions where it's made sense where an issue has gone across county boundaries. We have actually had a joint, some of it I may remember, we've had joint committees of Essex and Suffolk or Norfolk and Suffolk, like when we've talked about Norfolk and Suffolk Foundation Trust, our mental health provider. So there are ways to make it more efficient, but again I'd be guided by yourselves and the government in terms of the direction on that.
Ice cream.
No councillor, I don't want to leave you with that impression. I think where it makes sense, where there's an issue that crosses county boundaries, there is a logic to bringing the two together on a particular issue, but the issues are very different in every part of the two counties. So there is a logic to having some degree of separation. We are likely to, as we're designing our structure, we aren't going to abrogate every single thing to Norfolk and Suffolk. We will continue to have our local places within our geography, so Ipswich, Suffolk and West Suffolk as part of that. And our alliance director, which is next to me, I'm sure we'll talk later about what we're doing.
Would you like to come in here? Thank you.
Maybe on a related point, thank you sir. I'm Maddy Baker Woods and I'm the director for Ipswich and East Suffolk Alliance and as you know from previous screenings, the sponsor director for primary medical care and community services. So I think there's just two things that I would wish to really reassure the committee on as we go through this change process which Richard has described. And the first is that our focus and our dedication to safety, quality, performance and the financial management of these resources is absolutely sustained. And that's, I think, a message which Ed has given, the message which the directors have given and a message which we have all totally embraced. That is our purpose and we are very much focused on that. And secondly, and linked, I suppose, as I think as you were here today, illustrated of that is that people are being very strong, I think, in that focus and in what they're continuing to do through what Richard has described, is, you know, quite a turbulent time. So just for your reassurance and every part of our business is continuing to work as it has to date to ensure that standard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It is very good to hear that and reassurance to hear that the residents will be looked after the same way as before and it's just an operational sort of restructure. And I guess you will take on computers, more AI and you will look into all areas of change possible, I guess. Any other questions? Yep, councillor Shaw?
This one's now working. It's magic. That was the first one. I've been moved. I'm really aware and a lot of people are aware of the upheaval, I think, especially for people who work for the NHS. I've heard a lot of anxious people speaking to me, residents and so on. Something that I picked up on in an email from the King's Fund only this morning was a really interesting article based on the 10-year plan. And there was one word, one part of it really struck me. She was talking about hope, how important it is to give people hope. And something I've been picking up on are people's alarm that everything's tumultuous at the moment and the NHS is all changing. Are we, there's a lot of questions going on and I see we have Simon Morgan here. I'm wondering how information is going to go out to the people who perhaps fear that services are going, that they're not going to be in such a good place now as now and even really hoping that things will be a lot better than now. So my question really is about your communications. How are you going to reassure people? And I'm hoping very much you're not going to say just put things out on social media because there are so many people who don't engage in that at all. Thank you.
Thanks councillor. I might ask Simon to come in in a second if that's okay as well. So I think as the chair has said, particularly on the topic that we're talking about now, that is very defined as the operating costs for our organisation, so it's quite discreet. I do think there are some consequences that you can't take that degree of cost out and not have some implications. And that's what we need to work through, particularly in terms of an impact assessment. Absolutely, I think we will need to share through our public board meeting as an example and talk through the changes in the public board. So there'll be an opportunity for anyone to attend that in the public session. I think in terms of wider changes within NHS, let's see what the 10-year plan says when it comes out later this week. Simon might tell me off later, but I think there's an opportunity for us then reflect on how do we want to socialise and engage locally around what some of those significant changes are likely to say and what the impact of that could be locally. As I said, like you, I've not seen it yet, so until we see it later in the week. But I do think it would be an opportunity for us to consider how we do that. And I think linked to that, the other opportunity is we will need to develop our five-year operating plan. So effectively what are we looking to do over the next five years for that new organisation of Suffolk and Norfolk or Norfolk and Suffolk ICB? When we did that last time, which I led, we did a huge amount of public engagement in the development of that plan. We will need to do that again. So I think there's an opportunity to both link off the back of the 10-year plan and in terms of developing our new five-year plan for the organisation to do that in a spirit of engagement with our local population, probably later this year, early next, as we start to put that into place. Simon, is there anything you wanted to add?
Excuse me, can you please switch on your microphone?
Thank you. Sorry about that. I've got nothing really to add to what Richard's already said. Obviously there's a big piece of work relating to external communication which Richard's just outlined, but also internal communication as well within the organisation. And our chief executive holds regular staff briefings to ensure that colleagues within the ICB and partner organisations are aware of the changes which are happening and we're briefing stakeholders as well at regular intervals. So nothing further to add other than that. Thank you.
Thank you very much and welcome to the team. Oh yes, we have next one councillor Lockington please.
Thank you Chair. And as this is not a scrutiny meeting and I'm sure we'll come back to other, you know, how you're going to do it at other meetings. And I think it's too early to talk about joint committees or whatever because we don't know as county council what the future, how many unitaries we are going to have in Norfolk and Suffolk. So, you know, it's far too early to talk about the future there, you know. But yes, there will be people sadly losing their jobs. We have to be honest if you are to cut 50% of the workforce. But also the people who are left behind will probably feel they've got to cover all this extra work. So can you get a message back that, you know, we actually feel we know what it might be like a little bit for an organisation in a situation like this? And, you know, it's not an easy thing because maybe some people have other kind of jobs they can go to, but some people have worked and have been committed to the health service for many years and it's not an easy job. for many years and it's not an easy message. So can, can you take a message back to staff? I think we, they deserve that. Thank you.
Thanks councillor, it's really well appreciated and we'll pass that on through the organisation. I have to say, we've, we've been overwhelmed with support from our local government colleagues. So we've, we've spoken and met with the chief execs of all of the local councils who've offered support where they can, particularly as we also look in a positive way at other opportunities coming out of this in terms of how we can work even more closely between health and local government. But thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much and councillor Lloyd, please.
Thank you Chair. We've touched on it a little bit and I know you don't have a specific figure, but you must have some kind of idea as, I mean, you've mentioned between 25 and 60 odd percent. It's quite a difference in terms of the amount of, we've called it headcount reduction, but it's job cuts that will have to be made between 25 and 60% in terms of savings. Can you give the committee any idea of which end of that 25 to 60 it might end up being? Or is it completely unknown?
Yes, thanks councillor Lloyd. So just to be clear, each of the 42 integrated care boards are being given individual targets. So it's a little bit complicated, but simplistically, we've got something, 19 pounds for every head of, every person. So effectively you times up 19 pounds by the number of people in that new geography and that gets your budget. So, and then you compare that to what you've got now. So when you compare that to what you've got now, for some integrated care boards, it's 27%. I think at the highest it's nearly at 60. So it depends on your starting point to effectively what your percentage is. So for Suffolk and North East Essex, it was around 45% in terms of reduction. But as I've described, we don't think it's feasible and strategically right to try and do that. So we, the option we're going with, with coming in with Suffolk and Norfolk and creating a Greater Essex changes the percentage somewhat. So it's not that it's a complete reduction, it's we will need to transfer some of those staff across into those two new organisations. So it's roughly about 50%.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and councillor McLaren, please.
Thank you Chair. First of all, I want to say how sorry I am that you've got another reorganisation. I haven't been around the health service all my life. It's just full of reorganisations, isn't it? Great personal cost. I've got two questions. The first one, you did allude to about the, the new mayor. Do you think the ICB's joint will have an influence on the mayor's office? Do you think they're going to be part of that strategic team?
Thanks councillor. So we've had some early conversations with the council chief execs who are obviously developing the different plans for unitaries and also for the combined authority. I'm personally quite excited by the prospects of having the combined authority because I think there are some strategic things we can do differently with the new mayor and the new administration that comes in as part of that. In terms of any detail at this stage, I think it's too early to say in terms of what that precisely looks like. And also I think it will depend on who the mayor is and what the mayor wants to focus on from experience of some colleagues who've worked in London. Each London mayor has got, has had a different emphasis and that's changed the degree of which the NHS has then actively been involved, for instance. But I think, I think there are opportunities that come out of that. We haven't got into any conversation about joint structures, for instance, as part of this because I think it's a little bit too early from the local government side to try and get there. But I, I would personally be keeping that option open as we start to understand a bit more about how that new combined authority and the mayor model will work.
My second question Chair, thank you. Given all the changes, both local government and county council functions actually are changing, aren't they, health-wise? What will be the relationship of the joint ICBs with national, people like the CQC and national standards of practice?
So at the same target question, at the same times we're going through our own changes in terms of what I've outlined, I've alluded to that the national team are also going through a significant change with NHS England effectively being abolished and brought into the department. On Thursday or later this week, we're also expecting Dr Penny Dash has also done a review as the Chair of NHS England into a number of the patient safety bodies. So there is likely to be further, and as part of the 10-year plan, there's going to be further announcements about changes. Again, not seeing the detail around what some of the national architecture and landscape looks like. So effectively, I think there's an opportunity to redraw what that relationship looks like between how the national team work, how the regional teams work and how we work. But it's all in a bit of flux at the moment as we kind of work it through. I think particularly on the Care Quality Commission, which regulates our NHS providers and social care, as you know, they've gone through their own significant change, new leadership, new slightly different approach. The relationship then will still be really key. So at the moment, we, we talk to them through our chief nurse all the time as they come in and are inspecting a number of our services. So I would expect a ongoing, very close relationship, particularly with the CQC.
Thank you very much and councillor Thompson, please. I am so sorry. My apologies councillor Row, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not really expecting answers at the moment, but when you come, bring, come back with kind of more details about how things will be, I'm just struggling, I don't quite know how it will work with linking up with kind of say services at the hospitals because obviously kind of Ipswich and kind of Chester, we've had conversations here where kind of there's been people going down to kind of new facilities in Essex or West Suffolk. Yeah, how it will, how the new structure of ICB over the mayor authority boundaries will then tie in with the health, the hospital boundaries and that sort of thing. And also kind of the implications of us being a very rural area. So kind of if it's a certain amount per head that doesn't, like travel costs and kind of the kind of engaging with people over a wider area, obviously comes with a higher cost and in some more density, dense metropolitan areas. So kind of it would be a bit, it would be good to know what the impact of that side of stuff because obviously there's been points where kind of there hasn't been as much engagement with populations and that has affected their health. And that's partly what it seems the operational side kind of does. So yeah, it'd be good to know the effects of that.
Thanks councillor. So on the first question, in one way, it won't change the nature of the relationship between an individual and the hospital. So the changes were announced, it doesn't change in one sense, that interaction and that care that patients have provided. In another, it does. So as currently we, ESNEF at East Suffolk and North East Essex Foundation Trust, as you're alluding to councillor, straddles both County of Essex and the County of Suffolk. So at the moment, we commission that trust for all care that is provided there. In the new arrangements, they will potentially, if this comes to pass, they will straddle into the Greater Essex area, ICB and our ICB. So we, we are working with our colleagues to work through what the best approach to that could look like. So as one example, it could be that one of the two ICBs takes a lead in terms of commissioning that hospital. But day to day, I'm not envisaging it, the effort, a patient to have a material impact on their day to take care there. I think on the second question, we've got, if you're looking at Norfolk and Suffolk, we've got two very rural, largely rural and coastal areas. There's a lot of synergy between the challenges and the opportunities across those two counties. We've got two fantastic engagement and comms teams across in the context of having to reduce, should I say, Simon's sat here. But that's absolutely something that we're committed to making sure that we get right as part of this restructure, is that we need to make sure that we're continuing with that patient engagement and co-production, I should say, with our population. But I'm not going to say it won't be tricky because it will be when we've got less staff, but we're committed to doing as much as we can. And also I think there's more we can do with local government. So local government are amazing, having had been an officer and a cabinet councillor myself, there is loads we can learn from local government in terms of that engagement piece and we are doing. And I think back to councillor McLaren's question earlier, slightly broader, there are opportunities to integrate with our local government colleagues, particularly I think around areas like how we engage with our population. Simon, what have I missed?
I think you've covered everything there. Richard, thank you.
Yeah, please kind of hand over to you. Thank you. I suppose the other thing that I would just supplement is both in national policy and as you know, locally for us, we've had a very significant focus on neighbourhoods and integrated neighbourhood teams, which bring together our social care colleagues, our community health service colleagues. And ESNEF is an acute and a community provider with general practice. And as we, this is a segue perhaps into our social prescribing and our district and borough teams. So we've had that very strong emphasis on their development. So in Ipswich, there are two, but then we've got, you know, coastal integrated neighbourhood team, the Stow Market area, the north west area covering Iron Community. So we have a very anchored community neighbourhood approach. And I think, as Richard has said, we will need to do differently. But the development of these teams and this way of working means that we will have really strong ways in which to listen to people's experiences of care, to listen to their aspirations and to work differently in response. We know we need to be very local in the way in which we work. So they're assets that we have in Suffolk. I focus on the Ipswich and East ones, but the same applies in West Suffolk, which I think will be very, very important policy terms and practically as we move forward. So I hope that's some reassurance as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are no further questions, I just wanted to point out that restructure and transformation might actually lead to a more effective and efficient organisation. So restructure as such is nothing to worry about. And I think we have to sort of feed this back to our residents. Thank you very much, Mr Watson. And I move on to item agenda seven, which is about social prescribing in Suffolk. The agenda item seven provides the committee with an opportunity to consider how social prescribing initiatives are being delivered in Suffolk and in particular, how social prescribing is being used to support children and young people. You will find the, the notes on pages 17 to 48.
I think we have speakers and I think it's Mrs Baker Woods first.
Thank you very much. So we thought what we'd do is if I just open up with a little bit of a description of what social prescribing is and then, and just what it comprises. And then Mark and Louise and Kelly will say a little bit about how the model is being implemented, focused on the needs of the communities of West Suffolk, Ipswich and East and the Waverley area. And then I think we'd agree that we would pause and take your questions as NHS colleagues and then our colleagues from Mid Suffolk and Bever and the Mix will take over so and describe their, their model. So we hope that's okay and gives good breaks for questions. Thank you. So what is social prescribing, I guess is the first very important question. So it's one pillar of what we call universal personalised care. And the personalised is, is very important. And it's designed to increase choice and empower people to manage better their health and wellbeing within their communities. So it's very much based within communities. It enables healthcare professionals, social care colleagues, community teams, other statutory services, individuals themselves, as well as voluntary community faith and social enterprise organisations to refer people to a social prescribing link worker. And the link worker is a trained individual who has time, can give people the time to focus on the conversation of what matters to me beyond the core medical care needs that they may have. And from that conversation, to understand people's circumstances and to understand their aspirations, to build with them a personalised plan, to co-produce that care and support plan, which will enable them to take more control over their health and wellbeing. It's not a service that everybody needs, but it's a service that many people do need at certain points in their lives. And social prescribers are individuals, but very importantly, as you'll hear, they work together as a team, as a network, within a wider community environment. And once they've understood people's needs and they've worked with them to develop their plan, that may be that a referral to another organisation to support their needs is what is required. And there's all sorts of different organisations that can help people within their communities. And as you'll hear from my colleagues, the needs, a great number of the needs relate to social isolation, relate to loneliness, relate to low levels of self-esteem and to lower level mental health challenges. And it's through this one-to-one support and it's through the support that they can guide people to, take people to, walk with them initially, that their whole health and wellbeing can be improved. And in fact, their need for other medical interventions can be reduced, which is very often an individual's aspiration. So part of the investment that we make is not only in the social prescribing link workers themselves, the individuals in that network, but also into the organisations that can provide them with the support they need in communities. So investment predominantly in the voluntary and the community services sectors. The other key element is sometimes what people need is just a very small personalised budget that can make an absolute difference to their ability and their capacity to engage either with medical NHS services or with other community-based support. So it can be quite small personal budgets. And I know there's a long history in the local authority of offering those types of budgets, but what we found is that small things can make a huge difference to enabling people's plans to be realised. So this is not new totally, and you'll hear that, we've been working on this for, for a number of years. And there's a huge body actual, actually of international and national evidence of what this investment can mean for individuals and actually for systems and for healthcare services and for social care services themselves. And some of those are listed in your paper, those wider sources. But I just want to go back to, to realise the full potential of social prescribing for individuals. It's very important that we invest in the systems and processes to enable people to refer themselves, enable organisations, GP practices, social, social workers, district nurses going into people's homes, to be able to make referrals and to have good, safe processes for recording and for monitoring and for evaluation, both for individuals and obviously to evidence the value for money that this is providing. So I hope that with that, you've got a picture of how an individual may access a social prescriber and then of the work that they do, the time that they spend, the plan that they develop and the referrals that they may make and the benefits. But to bring it to real life, I will hand over to my colleagues. Let's just, we'll go first to Mark perhaps because you're sat next to me. You've gone to introduce yourself and share. Thank you.
Hello everyone, my name's Mark Shorter, I'm head of the
I'm head of Alliance Development for West Suffolk Alliance, part of the Suffolk North East Essex ICB. In West Suffolk, we've got a dispersed model, I think, in one way, in that we have public health who have funded a one working time equivalent who sits within our hospital in the acute site, working with patients particularly with a focus on respiratory conditions. So they will be taking referrals from across the hospital where social prescribing has been flagged as a consideration for that particular patient. They will have personalised conversations with those patients on the ward around what matters to them. And they will start to look at what's available for them in their local communities upon discharge from the hospital so they can receive that non-medical support. It reduces anxiety around the discharge for that patient, but also ensures there's a network of support for once the hospital stay has finished and they're back out into the community. We also have a number of social prescribers who are based within our primary care networks. The primary care network teams have utilised the additional roles reimbursement scheme to invest heavily in social prescribing across West Suffolk. So we have six primary care networks that cover the whole of West Suffolk that roughly align to our neighbourhoods within Haverhill, Subbury, Newmarket, Mildenhall and Brandon, Bury Rural and Bury Town. And I remembered it. So the PCN, sorry, primary care network social prescribers will take medium complexity patients, referrals from the GPs and practice staff. It's not just aligned to two GPs. And this will be for non-medical issues affecting their health and wellbeing. The practices will be using their own internal database systems and using our population health management systems to identify patients that are experiencing our health inequalities, particularly aligned to our core twenty plus five. And they will be often frequent users of GP services where we're finding that other social issues may be causing some of that demand within the primary care network. So that service is very community-based, very local support, and our GP services are using them frequently. We then have the ICB-funded system or service called Life Link. We have a lot more complex case referrals coming into the Life Link social prescribers. It can be done by self-referral, but mainly it is from our integrated neighbourhood teams, which has been suggested already consists of our community nursing, our physios, our therapists, and of course, adult social care. They will connect people into the community activities to help healthy lives and reduce the social isolation and demand for the health and social care teams within that integrated neighbourhood team. Again, this is working proactively with people who feel disconnected from services. And there's a role in prevention and the use of knowledge of the local community to really support that asset development in terms of what we use locally. On top of that, we have also commissioned a support, supported advice service from Citizens Advice. That is to solely and purposefully focus on financial difficulties and bearing in mind that we are dealing with some of our more complex patients through a social prescribing offer. It isn't just a referral into a normal citizens' advice kind of service. It's not the core service that is funded from our local district and boroughs. This is very much more a sensitive, supportive, one-to-one service. We've had our most recent report from Citizens Advice to suggest that in the first three months of the service this year, they have enabled people to access nearly sixty thousand pounds' worth of welfare benefits and financial debt support from a caseload of a hundred and seventy-nine. So they are making significant progress for those people most in need of financial support. I'm going to focus on the Life Link social prescribing service because that's what we as the ICB commission. But over the course of April, first of April twenty-four to the thirty-first of March twenty-five, they saw five hundred and fifty-seven different people across the six localities that they work in within West Suffolk. As I said, many of the cases are quite detailed. So nearly sixty percent of those one-to-one conversations last over an hour. And it requires a lot of research within that local community to find out what's the best outcome for that person to really align the outcomes that they want to achieve with what's available locally. The vast majority of the referrals have come from our integrated neighbourhood teams. So that's your community nurse and your therapy teams and social care. We do see some referrals come in from our primary care social prescribers where they feel that it needs that extra little bit of complexity and bit more time for the patients. So there's that referral pathway in-house as it were as well. Maddie picked up on this in her conversation, but the vast majority of the main reasons for referral is around social isolation. It's nearly half of the referrals is the main referral reason for coming into that Life Link service. We do have a number of case studies available. I didn't add into the pack because I was asking very specific questions. But we are able to see some of the impact that it's having on individuals' lives. And there is often onward referrals to other organisations. We're just about to invest and go live in a system called Joy, which is like an online marketplace. I'm seeing some nodding because I know it's available in Norfolk and Wavney already. But we're testing it out in West Suffolk to use that almost as a referral platform for our social prescribing services, but also for our GPs and clinicians across the system to be able to refer directly, essentially a click of a button. And I will now hand over to my colleague Louise.
Thank you, Mark. Good morning. My name's Louise Hardwick and I'm Deputy Director of Partnerships for Ipswich East Suffolk Alliance, which is part of Suffolk North East Essex ICB. Nice to see everybody. In Ipswich East Suffolk Alliance, we have a social prescribing programme called Connect for Health. Connect for Health was established in two thousand and nineteen. So a little bit, so sooner than the additional roles reimbursement scheme with, from primary care. Our service is across our eight integrated neighbourhood teams in Ipswich and East Suffolk. And it's a free service for anyone aged eighteen and over. Referrals are received from all our statutory and our voluntary sector partners, including self-referral and through our GP practices. That can be through the clinical system directly to the provider and others are going as an email or a telephone number. Each of our participants have what we call a personalised care support plan. It's really important that they are, that they are listened to. And we're finding there isn't just one appointment. If somebody needs six or eight or ten appointments, it doesn't matter. There is no maximum. We find the first referral or the first appointment is what we call our discovery session. Because often what our evidence is telling us, those who are being referred are being referred for something like we've just mentioned, social isolation and loneliness. But it becomes very clear in that discovery session, it's a bit like an onion. You peel away all the layers and it actually goes down. And actually, there is a deeper root cause for a lot of the concerns and issues for that participant. The Connect for Health programme was commissioned by the Clinical Commissioning Group. And that was funded directly from them, which was fantastic. And is now funded by the Ipswich East Suffolk Alliance until March twenty twenty-seven. We really believe that the voluntary sector is the backbone to our social prescribing programme. And as such, we do have two providers providing our programmes. They are Citizens Advice in Ipswich. So they oversee Connect for Health in Ipswich. And the other six integrated neighbourhood teams are covered by Shore Trust. It's really important that we've noticed that within Ipswich, the needs and the issues are a lot different to obviously our rural and coastal communities. And as such, the providers that we have are really strong, collaborative. And really, they talk across each other and work closely together across the eight integrated neighbourhood teams. Because it's important for us to matrix work. So if there's some concerns around benefits or, you know, they've got a query in Felixstowe, they can phone Citizens Advice in Ipswich, et cetera. We also have very strict governance rules, particularly clinical governance. So we do have oversight on clinical governance on our programme, particularly as we're starting to see more complex participants coming through. And then the social prescribers every month meet with their, with their notes of their participants and if they need to talk through particular challenging participants to get support from the clinical side, including safeguarding, et cetera. Our model has evolved very much from the very beginning. As I said, it was a community-based social prescribing. It now involves, as Mark's just mentioned, a respiratory social prescriber, which is based at Ipswich Hospital. That is an all-family approach because we find that obviously if we have an adult with asthma or COPD or a housing issue, that often affects the whole family. So it's very much a family approach. So it is embedded in paediatrics. The idea is the, with that, the respiratory social prescriber and our hospital-to-home social prescribers in the hospital is that they support people and patients through their journey, whether that's waiting well for elective care for an operation or whether they're in hospital and it's to support them better on discharge. Those social prescribers will support those people whilst they're at the hospital, but then they're transferred to their community social prescriber who picks them up nearer to home. So they're able to support them on discharge or during their wait for elective care operations. We also have a social prescribing programme for, that supports our health inequalities programmes for adults with complex needs. They're adults with three or more long-term conditions. And that is very much centred around creative health and working also with Ipswich Town Football Club. We also have social prescribers supporting our react urgent community response multidisciplinary teams. So when the community teams are looking to prevent someone going into hospital, social prescribers very much are part of that multidisciplinary team to support those individuals to stay well at home, particularly around those social determinants, wider determinants of health. We also recognise that onward referrals to our voluntary sector organisations are not free. And that means that there is a community chest fund for each of our integrated neighbourhood team's social prescribers to support those onward referrals. Now, those onward referrals may be that they've seen a gap in service or that actually we are referring into services, whether it's men's sheds or it could be the local choir or the local allotment. And there is funding there to support those organisations with the number of referrals coming through. And overseeing that, we recognise that, as Mark said, our social prescribers have to go through mandatory training. And that training we've asked for, whether that's mental health first aid or bereavement or suicide prevention. We put our social prescribers through that training. We make sure that is always up to date. But actually, we also offer that to the voluntary sector organisations who are receiving those referrals. Because it's important to look at their welfare as just as much as our social prescribers and our participants. So I think it's, I think, I think over the last six years, there is definitely a strong body of evidence that social prescribing does improve the wellbeing for people, giving them more control over their lives. And what we have certainly seen through our evaluations that it has definitely reduced pressure on the NHS services. So we've also seen through our evidence and the PAC will show you that social prescribing, the referrals increases with age. So of those aged seventy years plus, nearly forty percent of our referrals are for that demographic. With just seven percent aged eighteen to nineteen. However, there is a higher rate of referrals for young adults eighteen to twenty-four in Ipswich because it is very much a younger demographic and that makes thirteen percent of our referrals. So over the last year, we've supported three, just short of three thousand seven hundred individuals. And as we've just mentioned, it's very much based around loneliness, financial, particular emphasis on housing at the moment, mental health and addiction. We also have had two hundred and thirty referrals through Ipswich Hospital. Of those, thirty-five percent were related to housing issues. We've also used personal health budgets in the hospital. That is to help support people, whether it's, so I'll give you a quick case study. Someone was what we call kept coming into the hospital because they couldn't control their diabetes. But we couldn't understand why. Basically was, the gentleman was homeless. He was in a bed and breakfast, didn't have access to a fridge or a lockable cupboard. So for thirty-five pounds, we bought him a fridge. He was able to store his insulin and his needles and things weren't stolen out of his room. So just a small amount of money has made a huge difference to that gentleman. So we've invested three thousand two hundred pounds for twenty-six people, which the return on investment for the last year was fifty-five thousand pounds. And we've noticed through A and E attendances and also the number of unplanned admissions, we've saved a hundred and seventy thousand pounds on those sort of reduction in activity through social prescribing at the hospital.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dr Kelly Semper. I'm the Deputy Head of Children's Mental Health within the Norfolk and Wavney Integrated Care Board. And I oversee our prevention and community transformation programmes. So I'm going to take you on a bit of a journey for the next five minutes or so around children and young people, which is where my passion lies and where I, I think there's a huge amount of transformation happening over the border and into the Wavney district as well. And so we've already heard from colleagues in Suffolk about the investment into social prescribing, both by the Integrated Care Board but also by primary care through the additional roles reimbursement scheme. And in Norfolk and Wavney, our social prescribing purist workforce is very much funded by our PCNs, our primary care networks through their additional roles reimbursement scheme. That doesn't mean however, that we don't have roles and pathways within the wider system that very much look like social prescribers or have the underlying principles of social prescribing without the name. And I'm going to try and talk a little bit through some of the things we're doing for under eighteens and eighteen to twenty-fives in the Norfolk and Wavney patch to support those individuals. One of the things that's been touched on quite a few times by colleagues is that isolation is a huge factor for people and a huge primary reason for why individuals require social prescribing or the type of support social prescribers can provide. And there was a recent publication by Young Minds around young people actually being some of the most isolated within our population, much of which is as a result of, in many cases, social media and feeling less connected to their peers. But also especially those with neurodiversity or additional complex needs feeling particularly isolated within their local communities. So I think there's a really untapped potential there to engage with young people in a different way. I've got several projects that I want to talk to you about, all of which are mentioned within the PAC. So I won't dwell on them in too much detail. However, some of the things that potentially you might learn from in Suffolk around what we do in Norfolk and Wavney are the way in which we harness the power of the voluntary sector, as we've already spoken about. So within our primary care networks, we now have enhanced recovery workers. And so these are individuals employed by Mind, the mental health charity. And they work with young people aged fourteen and over around low-level mental health issues. And they very much do what a social prescriber would. And they work within that primary care network in the MDT approach. So they work with other professionals within that primary care network, including social prescribers, to understand how to connect young people and adults to community assets to improve their mental health and wellbeing. We've also commissioned in our team, the children's mental health team, something called the Advice Support and Access Service within Norfolk and Wavney. So this is a single point of referral for any mental health request for anyone aged zero up to twenty-five years. Now, that's hosted and managed by Cambridge Community Services or CCS, who deliver our Healthy Child service in Norfolk. Now, Wavney children can access this pathway. Now, Waveney children can access this pathway, and one of the primary reasons for why we wanted to host it within our Healthy Child Service was that we wanted to focus on those young people that probably didn't need therapeutic intervention, just needed someone to talk to, that single session approach, and then signpost it to local assets. So very much at the heart of our advice and access service is a social prescribing initiative, I suppose, to signpost twenty-five percent of referrals into community support, rather than then sending them to a therapeutic pathway and potentially a waiting list, which wasn't necessary. The third project, which I think is really exciting actually, has been led by our local maternity and neonatal system, our LMNS colleagues. And they identified that there was a real gap in support offered to mothers that were presenting in some of our most deprived areas of Norfolk and Waveney. So they used a team within our Integrated Care Board called the Virtual Support Team. And they were a team that was stood up in the pandemic to ring around vulnerable people and ask if they wanted support with shopping, or if they felt isolated to befriend, to have a befending service. And they've adapted their model to now be a population health resource for us as an ICB, as an Integrated Care Board. So we use the Virtual Support Team and the data that we have within primary care systems and in maternity systems to identify women that were in IMD or indicate indices of multiple deprivation deciles, one and two. So they, those are the most deprived people within Norfolk and Waveney. We phoned those women that had had a booking appointment at the midwifery suites and offered them some advice and guidance around the services that were available in their local communities. And that service itself engaged over a thousand women that were expecting a baby and their families. And actually, thirty-five percent of those women took up the offer of having an early health assessment by family hubs, or they work with Citizens Advice and the social prescribing networks in Waveney for those, for those individuals as well, which I think is a potentially a population health model that could be expanded to a whole variety of other cohorts in terms of that proactive outreach. And then the last project that I really wanted to touch on is our community youth work project, which I'm very excited to see the mix here because it sounds very similar to what, what colleagues are doing over there. And in Norfolk and Waveney, we identified that there was a lot of investment going into the adult space, particularly around mental health and community transformation, less so in the under-eighteens. And, and what we have is a huge proportion of young people in Norfolk that are missing education. They're not attending school for a variety of reasons, many of which are mental health related. And so we thought that it would be a good idea to pilot having youth workers embedded within our primary care networks. And as a result of that, we commissioned the Bancroft Advice Project, which is a youth charity based in Norfolk, to host youth workers within the PCNs, within the primary care networks. Now, those youth workers, like the enhanced recovery workers I mentioned previously, are very much part of the wider MDT. And what that has really benefited is that we've encouraged those adult roles to think family, which I think is crucial. Ultimately, many parents, many adults accessing services within their primary care network, our parents, our grandparents, and those wider family issues are very much intergenerational. So we've got those adult roles to think family. We've delivered training for them, which absolutely has provided increased value to that service. But we've also got the youth workers that work with young people aged eleven plus, so eleven to twenty-five. And in the last year, those youth workers have supported five hundred young people, a significant proportion of which are now back in education as a result of the intervention that they've provided. And that intervention is very much focused around mentoring, offering a twenty-week support offer. And then, as with previous projects that have been mentioned, a small budget to encourage them to get into other activities, whether that be boxing, horse riding, et cetera, to support them to access services in their local community. So all of the funding associated with the projects that I've mentioned come from various pots. So social prescribing, as I said at the start, the purist social prescribing, very much in Norfolk and Waveney, is based on the additional roles reimbursement scheme. However, I hope I've kind of emphasised that it doesn't have to be that pot that supports this kind of initiative. And it's the children's mental health and the adults' mental health budgets that have funded these types of initiatives in the Norfolk and Waveney patch, which I hope you'll see have had significant benefits. We are more than happy to come back and talk in more detail about any of those projects. And I think we've already touched on this morning with Richard and others, we're going to only be working much closer together over the coming six months or so. And so certainly my, my passion and my focus over the next six months is to learn from one another, to learn from Suffolk colleagues, but also to share ideas and transformation projects with Suffolk colleagues to see if there's any opportunities for replication. But we'd be happy now to take any questions from the room.
Thank you very much. Panel members, are there any questions, thoughts or comments, please?
In East Suffolk, we have a, a, a funding structure called Community Partnerships. And basically, what this does is it's set up to, to, to fill in everything which, which isn't being done by, by council or, or, or the health service, or, or anybody else. And, and it needs, needs sort of setting up. It does things like help aims to tackle loneliness and, and provide mentoring and, lots of stuff which, which, which you, you all already say. I mean, yes, as I say, just shut me off if, if you, if you want to shut me off. But what we're saying is that, that, that maybe, maybe, maybe the rest of the, the county can, can sort of think about what we're doing and maybe they can, they can, they can take, take that. And, and it seems to me that we, we can, we can, we can work with you for the, for the benefit of, of, of society, yeah.
Panel, please come in. Yeah.
Councillor Thompson. Yes, so there's a very strong partnership between your officers and our team. And I think over time through Nicole Rickard with her leadership, we've really managed to align our intentions, our support and our investments. And it's been very deeply kind of working in partnership to achieve that. And I do think it's, it's, it's had a lot of benefits, hasn't it? So, and I think there's a different model in each of the districts and boroughs in terms of our partnerships. We also work very closely with the public health team across Suffolk. Because as, exactly as you say, this is a collective goal, isn't it? And for our residents. So, yes, we very much appreciate those partnerships. I think they're very strong. They're, they're just slightly different in each patch, but they're very strong. Thank you.
Councillor Shaw, please.
I think I've got the right one this time. Thank you. That, that has been so interesting. And I have absolutely no doubt that the social prescribing model is the way forward. It's ticking all sorts of boxes around preventative. I'm very interested in how much highlighting there has been of the financial hardship for people that actually is impacting their wellbeing and then obviously their physical health and mental health as it goes on. Something I noticed in the paper that really caught my eye, it came up around social prescribing service in a medical centre, in a GP practice. And there's, reading through, there seems to be quite a successful pilot going on at Two Rivers. There's quite a lot of information in the PAC about that. Is that something that you foresee will be happening more widespread going forward? And I'm thinking particularly in areas that you've already mentioned really, where there's high deprivation. I'm, I'm obviously speaking from one particular corner of Ipswich, as you might realise. But this isn't, that isn't the only area where there is massive need. And to have that person working from one particular practice, I imagine is very powerful. But it probably cuts out that middle person of referring and so on, because they are there on the spot and they're talking to the medical team and, and so on as well. So is that something that's likely to be eventually, when all be turmoil over the next year or so, sort of settles?
Thank you, Councillor Shaw. So I think as we've all described, there are some primary care networks that have recruited their own dedicated social prescribers. And certainly in Norfolk and Waveney and in West Suffolk, that's, that's quite holistic. In Ipswich and East Suffolk, because as Louise described, we actually commissioned a social prescribing service in this model before primary care networks came into being, to some extent, there was already a strong model and strong coverage. And so for Ipswich West, there is a dedicated social prescribing service. It will cover more than the one large practice. It covers a number of practices in Ipswich West. But it's also supplemented by a number of projects. So we do have some primary care networks in Ipswich and East Suffolk that have chosen, as you've mentioned, Two Rivers, to sort of, to recruit additionally, but not all and because this service is provided. So we'll see how that evolves over the future. But, you know, there is in Ipswich and East Suffolk, universal coverage and universal offer through the Connect for Health Programme. Hope that goes some way to answering the question. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Just to add to that, which I think is quite important, certainly from our current state, status of Suffolk and North East Essex ICB, myself, Louise and our colleagues in North East Essex, come together last August, I think it was. And we were very much trying to look at the differences, but also the synergies and alignment that we have within our social prescribing services. And a report has been designed, which I think is going to exec committee fairly soon. It was Freedom's paper. So, yeah. And the idea of that was to then set the standard in terms of, well, how do we move forward as a system and think about system social prescribing, whether that's a joined-up commissioning process across the whole patch, or whether that's embracing the differences that we have within our different alliance spaces. And just sitting there listening to Kelly a little while ago, I was thinking, oh, that sounds great. So some of the Norfolk and Waveney kind of work that will now come into that space. I know the strategy's been put off to enable some of our restructures to kind of take place and happen. But then we can think about on a wider scale, what learning we take from other areas and how we think about it as a, as a system-wide engagement piece for social prescribing.
Thank you very much. I, I really like to hear that you try to work together and find one way to, to find the best possible outcomes. I have a question for you as well. I think Kelly mentioned the horse riding and I believe horses and some patients connect and it, they sort of help. It's very helpful for the patients. But what I wanted to know is, in general, your social prescribing systems or structure, does it involve sports and sports activities, leisure centres? Do you involve, do you work with them?
We have the offer of Feelgood Suffolk, which goes across Suffolk, which is actually commissioned by our public health colleagues and also our borough and district councils. We have invested into that space as well through the ICB. But our social prescribers, obviously with the weight management offer, the physical activity offers, it will be one of the first kind of tools they have in their case, basically, to support some of those people to access. We, we know through some recent evaluation on a project that we've been commissioning through West Suffolk, that physical activity has been kind of suggested as being like the miracle cure for everything. And I'm, I'm not going as far to say that on record without the backing of that. But there is a huge amount of benefit from physical activity, not only on physical, but on mental health. So our social prescribers will be using that offer as a stand, standing point.
Thank you very much. Before I get you in, Councillor Thompson, we have Councillor Rowe, please.
Can I just say, because I, I know that, I know that there was various projects and there's a project which, which had a, a person who was setting up a, 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 a biking, a biking, a bike, a group that, that was, was, was to help people. And also there was also a walking, walking group which was set up to help people with, from ethnic minorities who, who were isolated. So in that sort of way, this is, this is already happening. And it, it could happen elsewhere too. So anyway, so.
Thank you very much, Councillor Thompson. This is, these are really good initiatives and I like to hear that. Councillor Rowe, please.
How are you kind of advocating upwards? So kind of, I'm particularly aware at the moment that there's a disconnect between kind of how trans people are supposed to access things like leisure centres and stuff and kind of the fact that for the rest of the population, it's like, oh, you need to be active. For a trans population, it's like, you, if you want to be active, you kind of need to help yourself if you're using a leisure centre or something like that. And there's a, yeah, there's a massive disconnect between the person's approach that is happening kind of within voluntary sector and social prescribing and then kind of what is being expected from other parts, which then inhibits what can be done. And certainly with cycling and stuff, it's, there are, there are all sorts of different bits which, which inhibit people being able to feel safe, like going cycling and walking and all sorts of stuff like that. So a bit of how is the very good stuff working underground actually being fed up to people who have some other decision-makers? And also, how, like, have you got plans for like some sharing of it, like good practice and stuff like that? Because there's kind of lots of different, there's loads and loads of organisations in the voluntary sector and some have got particularly good practice. And it's not always that easy to provide a kind of activity if someone's had bad experiences before, or kind of sometimes with just group dynamics. And kind of some organisations then being able to kind of manage those group dynamics to manage, especially when you're dealing with people with complex needs or from marginalised communities. So, yeah, they're my two questions, if you can answer a little bit.
Thank you very much. I think there are two or three people who would like to come in. I don't know who would like to come in first.
If I give a, okay, thank you for your question, Councillor. So if I, question to you, I'll give a, a high-level response and then I think Louise can share some detail. So I think one of the things that we have flagged, but not shared in detail, but Louise will add, is the importance of the social prescribers developing with each individual their very personalised plan and therefore understanding what matters to them, what is okay, what is possible and what's more challenging or difficult or not okay. And with that personalised plan, then seeking out a very personalised response. And that's the very nature of social prescribing itself. But as you say, the other piece is about the network and so of, of social prescribers and the importance of shared learning that doesn't refer to an individual. These are personalised conversations, they are confidential conversations. Louise has mentioned that where there might be a clinical concern or a clinical risk, that we have a GP leader that can support that. But these are confidential conversations. But it is very important that there are lessons learned and themes and concerns that can be raised in a safe forum amongst the social prescribers and with the wider network of organisations to whom they refer. And Louise, I'm sure that was what you were going to describe in a little bit more detail about how that works in Ipswich and East Suffolk. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Rowe. They're really good questions, so thank you for those. The first one where you mentioned about, we make sure that we don't put everybody in the same box, as Maddie just mentioned, it's very much personalised care. And not everybody wants to. And not everybody wants to go to the gym to lose weight. So we do have, so we do have a mechanism where that conversation, as Maddie said, with the participant and they're offered a suite of interventions. Because you can lose weight by going to the food museum. So we work closely with the food museum and somebody, you know, volunteers and works. So we do make sure that it is meaningful for that person. But you make a really good, you know, we had, so we use our community chest fund as well to make that personalised. So we've recently funded for 15 Kurdish ladies to learn to swim. Because just like you mentioned, they cannot go to a public swimming pool, so they do need to have a women only. So we funded that through our community chest fund and also through that personal health budget. So it is very much personalised. And then with regards to the network, we are very, very supportive of the voluntary sector in terms of, we are very aware of where we're signposting people onto and which organisations. And as part of those, we have those conversations with those organisations to make sure that the participants that we are referring on, so if I take a choir, that they can take, you know, three or four people. But we also mindful of the complexities around or the issues around that participant or participants, because it's important that we don't destabilise that choir, for instance. Or have they, has that choir master got the skills to be able to support? And we will find the right balance, because it's for both, important for the participant, those who are actually in those groups, but also the leader or the person that's leading those classes. So it's a lot of learning over the last six years and it's evolved and strengthened as we go along. But that communication is really very important. I think that's the most important thing I've learnt anyway.
And just to pick up on the question around sharing of practice, I have a senior transformation lead in West Suffolk who has that helicopter oversight view of social prescribing across West Suffolk. So she will hold a forum every month where our Life Link teams are sat next to the primary care teams, sat next to the hospital teams. And they are sharing practice, talking about, oh, had this difficult, complex patient in, can I have a conversation about how we can support that kind of together? So that's very much happening in kind of localised spaces.
Thank you very much. Councillor Lockington.
Thank you chair. It's been really great to hear what's going on, because I think it is a really valued service for our residents. I'm a bit interested to learn, because I'm a county councillor in Ipswich, and I think part of my division is in one side of Ipswich, the other is in the other side of it, east to west Ipswich. So I'd love to learn, you know, what's the difference in services? My bit of division is being offered, if there is a difference. But also, coming to Kelly Simpson, it's wonderful to hear about the work you're doing, especially with the young people. And one thing you mentioned was the intergenerational problems. And I think it is right, it's something we really need to think about, because so many of people living in deprived areas and so on have been there for generations. And we need to think about how we can help and support so that we don't carry on with people there. And I'm really happy to hear that you have a community chest, because I think it is important that, I know the prescribers, they are paid and they are employed staff, but the volunteer organisations out there are struggling today. And it is just important that you have a community chest you can offer, hopefully to them, because, you know, it is really hard to, for many people in the voluntary sector, if you have a charity, to, you know, to raise funding, to run the charity. And if you want to refer people to them, you need to be sure they are viable. I learned yesterday of Emaus, who has to close some of the work they do in the town centre, because they simply can't afford the building. So, you know, it is important that we really think about where we are referring and can that charity, is it viable? Is that charity struggling? And how can we afford the charity itself so that they can keep going? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lockington. I think, hopefully it came across in my presentation, I think family is one of my passions, I suppose. And actually not very tricky to implement if you think about your health system as a network of professionals often, which compartmentalise themselves into either the child and young person workforce or the adult workforce. It doesn't help A with transitions and B thinking about intergenerational vulnerability and intergenerational risk factors. So my aim, my objective is that I really would like a lot of our adult workforce to start thinking family. And it's not particularly tricky to do, it's just about winning hearts and minds and trying to get some really great pioneers and champions within the system to champion that approach. One of the things that I think we see time and time again within Norfolk and Wavney is adults presenting to primary care, people that are frequently presenting with a variety of health conditions, but often actually it's the wider social determinants of health that they need support with. So things like housing, finances, employment, even nutrition to a point and eating well and that type of thing. And there are services out there in the community. If we're tapping better into community assets to meet those wider determinants of health, that's going to actually pay dividends in the long run in terms of reducing repräsentations to GPs or potentially even to crisis teams within the acute hospitals. So I think that there is something about true prevention, thinking of that life course approach. There is, I believe, I'm led to believe that Lowestoft is going to be a marmot place. So we have a marmot place already in West Norfolk, in Kingsland and West Norfolk, which have identified that children and young people are the focus for being a marmot place. Lowestoft is now the next marmot place, I believe, in our patch. So from my perspective, I think we have a real opportunity in the Lowestoft and Wavney patch to start thinking about that life course approach to how we address the wider determinants of health. And personally, I might be biased, but personally, I think prevention starts with children, young people and families.
Thank you very much. Councillor McLaren.
Thank you chair. All of us represent populations and I'm very committed to all this, I think it's amazing. How do we, for you, how do we encourage these sort of developments now? I'm meeting with the Shaw team, Shaw Trust team, that's already somewhere in the diary. But I feel strongly that as a councillor, I really should be trying to encourage it more. How can we do that to help you achieve what you want to achieve?
Thank you. I mean, I do think the partnerships in this area in particular with the districts and borough is very, very positive in terms of the alignment of intent and in the practical partnerships and the alignment of funding. So I think that's a very positive kind of base that we have. So anyone can promote any of these services. I'm not sure we do have any bits of paper anymore, but we certainly do have, I think we have a few. We, little leaflets, don't we? Yes, we do. And, you know, and the telephone number that Louise has mentioned and the online option. So anyone can refer themselves or be encouraged and be supported to make that connection with a social prescribing service. So, you know, I think that's something that everyone could do together.
That's because most of us, sorry, most of us are meeting, I mean, at the moment, we're actually promoting, well, discussing LGR and devolution. That's part of our jobs to sit with our residents. And I would be very happy to promote all of this, because it's in those conversations, the informal conversations with people who are coming to community activities, that we can actually encourage it.
Yes, I just wondered whether I could hear a little bit about the Ipswich situation, where we've got two different areas. Thank you.
Sorry councillor Lockington. So yes, so in Ipswich, we have two integrated neighbourhood teams, but as Maddie said in her, in a previous question, that we have, they do work together as a singular integrated neighbourhood team. And as such, the social prescribers do support that across the patch. So that there is no difference, the service is the same across both. We have three, six social prescribers across Ipswich and they do support the whole population of Ipswich in that personalised way, recognising that there is different demographics in Ipswich and that does include different cultures. So we do have in Ipswich a multicultural social prescribing programme, which supports those from our different communities as well. So it's the same, exactly the same.
I would thank you very much indeed. I wonder whether a little directory might be helpful and might help with your, with the question that you've raised there councillor McLaren, which I'd be very happy to work with my colleagues on to develop and share with you. The other thing I just wanted to mention is that, so I lead our comms and engagement team within the ICB in Suffolk and North East Essex. And what we have been doing is we've been looking to involve some community groups who are involved in the social prescribing. So one that springs to mind is a group called Music in Our Bones, which is a local community group that encourages singing, helps people get together, reduces anxiety, helps improve people's mental health. So with our seasonal health campaigns, we're now looking to involve these groups to encourage membership and to also spell out the benefits of things like music activity can bring to reduce instances of loneliness and help improve people's mental health. And last year, we had some quite fruitful discussions with Music in Our Bones as part of our winter campaign and we're looking to develop those further this year, so that during this year's winter campaign, we can really promote that work and promote what they do quite positively. So we'll keep you informed with how that progresses. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any more questions? All right, then I would like to thank the panel very much for their contributions and for coming here. And I would like to invite now the team from the Barberg Mid Suffolk Project to make their presentation. And we have then questions or any comments afterwards. Thank you.
Sorry, just get my microphone working. Thank you so much for inviting us along here today to be able to present a little bit of a window into the youth social prescribing project that we're doing alongside Bebra and Mid Suffolk District Council here from the Mix. So yeah, I'm very aware of timing, so we'll give you a short window into it, but please, I'm very open to and can chat all day about youth social prescribing. So if you have more questions after this space, please do get in contact with me, I'll be more than happy.
Thanks Rebecca. Hi everyone, my name's Naomi Thompson, I'm a health and wellbeing project manager at Bebra and Mid Suffolk District Council. I'm just going to give a brief introduction into sort of the background of the youth social prescribing project. If I can get this to work. Where shall I be pointing? Sorry. Okay, I'll get started anyways. So the youth social prescribing programme in Bebra and Mid Suffolk was established in response to the growing recognition of the complex social and emotional challenges faced by young people, challenges that were significantly intensified by the COVID-19 pandemic. A lot of these challenges have been mentioned multiple times this morning already, but these included rising levels of poor mental health, increased social isolation and mounting barriers to engagement in education and community life. At the time, there was a notable absence of dedicated funding for preventative interventions aimed at young people and despite a clear and pressing need for early support to prevent escalation into more acute conditions. Figures such as those on the slide highlighted the need for preventative early intervention models like youth social prescribing. And as a result, a collaboration involving Bebra and Mid Suffolk District Councils, local schools, the VCFSSE organisations and health and wellbeing stakeholders came together to discuss the potential project. A model was developed on successful pilot initiatives such as Lifehacks Luton, with adaptations made to reflect the specific developmental and contextual needs of adolescents in Suffolk. So following a competitive procurement process, the three-year contract was awarded to the Mix, a local charity in Mid Suffolk with established expertise in youth engagement and community-based support, and the project launched in October 2023. The funding package included staffing costs and, as mentioned again by some of our other colleagues, an enabling fund designed to support individual young people with equipment, travel or to facilitate group-based activities after school or within the community. The funding was secured through a combination of local authority investment, the UK Shared Prosperity Fund and contributions from the Ipswich and East Suffolk Clinical Commissioning Group. Currently, funding has only been secured for three years. Youth social prescribing offers a preventative and non-clinical approach to improving the health and wellbeing of young people. Youth Link workers were embedded within schools to deliver personalised and preventative support. At the moment, there are four youth link workers embedded within four secondary schools, three located in Mid Suffolk, led by the Mix, and one in Bebra, led by 4YP. Enabling youth link workers to develop place-based personalised support directly to young people within educational settings. By embedding youth link workers within the schools and communities, the programme developed in our districts enables early identification and support for young people experiencing low-level mental health issues, social isolation or challenges linked to the wider determinants of health. I'm now going to pass over to Rebecca, who's going to talk in a bit more detail and really bring the project to life.
Thank you Naomi. Yeah, as Naomi has talked about, we here at the Mix run three of those high schools where youth link workers are embedded and 4YP have a lovely youth worker based over at the Holbrook School in Bebra as well. So with all that overview and context in mind, how does the project actually run on a day-to-day basis? So our youth link workers are based in their schools and they are there three days a week and then two days based out in the community. So the idea is that we have one foot in the community and one foot in those school settings, being the bridge between those two spaces. I'd say that our referrals mostly come from the pastoral support teams within the schools, as they're the teams that we work most closely with. However, wider school staff can input into those referrals as well. But actually, it might be that young people, because of that embedded model, we are based there, they can come and find us with their own initiative and actually sign up themselves, which we've been really pleased to see. So when we're in school, we run a mixture of group work sessions, lunchtime drop-ins, but primarily, as our colleagues have already established, it is that one-to-one work basis, where we work with young people on that kind of focused space, looking at what it is that they want to improve on, what do they want to get involved with and ultimately, what matters to them. We initially do this over the course of six weeks, just short little half an hour sessions, again, because of that embedded model, we don't want to impact on their school lessons too much, but it is important that we have that time with them and to be able to build that relationship with them. It might be at the end of those six weeks that actually we've just started to, as a colleague referred to earlier, peel back the layers of that onion and find that there is actually some more that we can chat about and that we can focus on. So it might be that we review again and perhaps look into some more weeks with them. But ideally, this is a short-term early intervention space. With that, with the building into those six weeks, the youth link worker has that space to help build trust, identify personal and family-related barriers in order to co-produce that tailored support plan. I would say that there is referrals that have come through, much like the topics that have already been discussed and covered today. The referrals are largely for feelings of anxiety, low mood and isolation. Loneliness in itself has been identified as a social and health problem, with suggestions that it is on the same scale of the physical effects of smoking 15 cigarettes a day. So this really highlights the importance of the work that our team are doing and how this project can really come into its own through that early intervention, in the hope that this will help young people to mature into adulthood with improved wellbeing and reducing the need for statutory services later down the line. Our embedded approach creates a consistent, trusted relationship that will help to improve wellbeing, build confidence and enable young people to thrive in school and beyond. So with all of that, how have we supported young people over the past couple of years? There are quite a few bullet points up there, don't worry, I won't go into every single one in absolute detail. one in absolute detail or else we will be here till Christmas, but I just wanted to draw your attention to a couple of things that I am really proud of that we've achieved over the last couple of years. I should have put it at the top, it is the bottom bullet point, but I want to draw your attention to World Cafe Club. In one of our high schools, there was a Ukrainian young lad, refugee, had come over from Ukraine following the really hardship times that they've suffered recently. And he really struggled with English as the additional language and therefore he found it really difficult to be able to make friends in that space. So our youth link worker did a little bit more digging and found that there was at least 40 other young people in that school where English was their additional language. So they set up this space called World Cafe Club. They met over a weekly lunchtime space where they could come in, share each other's cultures and I can tell you that Christmas time was the best time for that because they all brought their own traditional Christmas snacks in. Beyond that space of the youth link worker being involved, that group did actually continue with their own initiative and I'm aware that there are definitely some long-time friendships that have formed as a result of that. Through the Enabling Fund that has already been talked about, both within this team and in the wider social prescribing networks, we have actually funded things like gym memberships, we've paid for equipment to pursue a photography hobby and we have also paid for equipment to be able to engage in the Duke of Edinburgh Award within school as well. We've also been part of community events, we'll go out and promote ways of wellbeing, the Five Ways to Wellbeing Programme and sort of help encourage young people to pursue that in their day-to-day lives and how they can look after their wellbeing, as well as translating that into primary school workshops as well, particularly this time of year when there's a high level of anxiety around that transition from year six to year seven in that high school space. But we have also run our own community events as well, based on feedback from those young people of what they feel is missing in their community. And one of those is a gaming van event. Now I know we all want to get our teenagers off screens and out of their bedrooms, but this was a really nice way to be able to kind of introduce that real sense of what they wanted to do in a social sense. And because of the plurality of some of the high schools that we're in and the large catchment areas, it meant we were able to take those events out to them. And again, we had a full bus and young people came along and again, made some really lovely friendships that parents said they wouldn't have otherwise done if they'd have just stayed in their bedrooms. So they're just a little bit of a snapshot of what we do, but like I've already touched upon, it is that one-to-one work that we do. But because of that embedded nature and the model that we follow with being embedded in the school, it creates opportunities for cross-referrals within school, to work collaboratively and closely with those pastoral teams, as well as other services that are available within the schools, particularly the mental health teams, counselling services and school nurses, just as an example. So I just wanted to highlight some key data that we've captured over the last couple of years, which is up to date as of April 2025. We've supported 540 young people through that one-to-one work that I've talked about, of which 269 have been referred on to another service, either an activity or other community-based support services. 96 of those have actually reported that they've sustained that engagement, which we've agreed is attending on a one-month or more basis. However, the data only captures a really small proportion of the impact that we've had over the last couple of years. And I would actually really like to take you through some case studies. Again, hopefully you've received the pack that came out ahead of this meeting where there are a number of different case studies in that. Again, we will be here till Christmas because I could quite happily chat through all of those case studies, this is really lovely work that's gone on through there. But just wanted to draw your attention to a couple that I really wanted to talk about today. I think we really saw the kind of idea of social prescribing come to life in one of our high schools when our youth link worker was a young lad, so was quite relatable to a few of the other young lads within the school setting. The school identified that these young lads were really struggling within school to sort of manage their anger and where to sort of constructively spend some of that energy that they had. So our youth link worker started up a boys' group, a boys' support group within the school because it actually found that these boys were fighting and causing tensions both within, between school staff and between themselves, causing fights and all sorts of other things going on. So our youth link worker developed this group in co-production with this group, so looking at what worked well for you, what do you want to get out of these group spaces and ultimately what's the achievement that you want to get out of it beyond this group. He very quickly realised that they were quite a bouncy group and sitting inside a classroom completing more worksheets wasn't going to work for them. So they used to head out and play football, do push-ups and he used to come back to the office absolutely weared out from the amount of laps that these young lads would get him doing in the day. But without them even realising, through that kind of being busy, playing football with one another, they were having some really constructive conversations. It came out that actually these boys were really struggling with their own self-esteem and their self-confidence. So again, sessions were then tailored around how can they kind of best look at that, how can they best improve that and what can we do to help support them going forward. With all of these sessions, much like our one-to-one sessions, we have to stop at some point supporting these young people, we can't keep them on our books forever and it's looking at how can we kind of give them the tools and the confidence to go forward. So we explored options and the fact that this high school in particular backs on to the local leisure centre, we explored options with them, the possibility of setting up some gym memberships for these groups. The leisure centre were really happy to have us on board and actually the success of this group in particular, we started with only having four on the books, we have now funded gym memberships for at least 12 young people since that this little group started. So it's a real testament actually just how popular this has been and how successful that kind of partnership working can be. As a result of that kind of gym membership, the boys have all got successful structural routine in their days, they go straight from school into this gym space. They don't necessarily get a personal trainer, but there are more staff available during those times to help kind of structure and give them some goals to work towards. And then the school have since fed back that they've seen those negative behaviour points that the boys were racking up in school, they've drastically reduced as a result of that intervention. From this group, I also wanted to highlight one of our particular young lads. He started within a group setting with our youth link worker, but actually as the group went on, it was perhaps more beneficial that he focused more on a one-to-one session with the youth link worker. Straight away, the youth link worker came to me and said, Rebecca, I have some concerns about this young lad, I think there's something else safeguarding wise going on, it's that gut feeling I have but no evidence as of yet. So we said, let's put the time in, get to know this young person, open up, build that trust. And as it turned out, as that trust built, this young person came forward and confessed that he had a difficulty with smoking cannabis. He was smoking it on a regular basis and hadn't really talked to anyone about it before. He identified that he was using this because of a result of anger and struggling and how to kind of process those emotions. After reaching out to his parents at home, parents fed back that there was a difficulty in the relationship at home and they noticed a real difference in how their child was presenting. Again, through the work with our youth link worker, they built that relationship and built that trust up and the youth link worker encouraged him to go and join the gym as well. As a result of that, this young lad has now attended the gym on a weekly basis. I think he did start going daily, but the hot weather came along and it was getting a bit too much to go on a daily basis, but he still attends regularly. And again, reaching back out to the parent, they have noticed a real significant difference in how he's presenting at home and the improvement in their relationship together. And as a result, he has now reduced his use of cannabis and reports that he's only using it over the weekend rather than on a weekly basis during the week. This has been really successful and actually is opening up doors now that he has built that relationship with the youth link worker, that he's open to receiving some support from the drug and alcohol teams to be able to help reduce his use even further and look at positive ways and how to deal with his emotions. The final case study I wanted to pick up on today was probably one of our most recent case studies with the youth link worker. There was a young person that was referred to us because she had difficulties with her friendship and really struggled in how to process her anger and emotions in a positive sense. She also shared quite sadly with our youth link worker that actually she really struggled to feel heard in school. So again, the youth link worker got to know this young person, got to know what their strengths were and what it was that they could do to help champion themselves and to realise how to best love themselves. So as it turned out, we looked at ways of things that they would want, things that they would want to get into a different activity, something outside of school that can help give them a bit of a release and a bit of space and time to themselves. It turns out that they were a young carer. So again, this opened up really good opportunities for partnership working with the young carer's team and she had a real love for swimming, but because she was a young carer, she had to stop. So the young carer's team now have picked that line of inquiry up and are looking at ways that they can help fund and provide an opportunity for her to get back into something that she absolutely loves, which is her swimming. This allowed us to then focus on that she had signed herself up for the Duke of Edinburgh Award, which was run through school. The teacher highlighted that this young person didn't have all the equipment that she needed to successfully complete the Duke of Edinburgh Award. So through this Enabling Fund, we were able to fund that equipment for her. The feedback from the teacher has been really lovely and actually shared that this young person, and I quote, "was a changed lass from her practice expedition." He said, "Without the work that we've been able to do and the funding that we've been able to provide to get her that equipment, he doesn't think she'd have been able to have successfully completed it. She now has, she's got her certificate and she's feeling much more confident in herself. She feels that she's been heard and she's got a safe and respected space within that school environment." So hopefully, sort of some of the work that we've been able to do, like I said, I could go on with these case studies all day, but I appreciate we all don't have all day to sit and listen to me. But hopefully that brings to life some of the work that we've been able to do and how important it is that this work continues beyond the funding that we've got currently. So just wanted to summarise a little bit with some of the learning to date that we've had. We've had evaluation work that's been completed and hopefully, again, from the case studies and the data that are provided today, it shows that the programme has delivered significant benefits to our young people. However, there is an exciting opportunity to further align with the more formal principles of social prescribing. And I think we've talked a lot today about that kind of partnership working, best practice learning, and I think we are in that really exciting stage already. We've looked at how to kind of best review our best practice and particularly we've identified that schools will be our key success to this project, particularly with how we're embedded with them. So we're reflecting on how we best sort of run our referral criteria, how we run our referral pathways to make sure we're reaching those children that would most benefit from that social prescribing model. I hope you can appreciate that planning on paper and actually delivering the model are two very different things and as we work with young people and children, you never quite know what it is that you're going to walk into on a daily basis. So this is a pilot project and we are constantly learning day in, day out and we're looking at ways of how we can best include the voice of those young people as well to help shape the delivery of the project going forward. Again, sort of reflecting on where different patches have been different, the fact that all our high schools are all different in themselves, again, has been a real learning curve. We've started off with a fairly similar model across all of them, but we've had to adapt with ways of how the schools work and what's available in the process as well. Some of our high schools have got a wealth of extracurricular activities already available to those young people, whereas other high schools don't necessarily. So it's utilising and capitalising on those existing resources, looking at how we can grow that partnership working again to really success this project. Insights from the National Association of Social Prescribing suggests that at least one in five children have a probable mental health problem. As we've already touched upon, as I'm sure you can all appreciate, waiting lists for this specialised treatment are just increasing and the thresholds are also becoming higher to receive that treatment. So the recommendations from NASP are to grow the workforce and to have specialised children and young people's youth link workers available in every area, working closely with our NHS, primary care and mental health teams, charities, youth and community groups and the schools themselves. Our hope is that the learning from this project will help to pave the way for this to happen in our local area. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for two very passionate presentations. Members, do you have any questions? Councillor Shaw, please.
Thank you Chair. I'm blown away about this quite frankly. I wish this could happen in every school in our, well, in the whole land quite frankly. There is a massive need. Schools, certainly the schools that I know of, are sort of becoming the arm's length company of social services at the moment. I'm seeing so many situations where children are having to be taken into care and it's work around the whole family, it's not just those individual children. I'm very interested in the model that you're trying and it's one year in so far, is it? Roughly?
We're in two years now, so we've got about a year and a half left.
So I really do hope that the funding can be found because, and that this sort of model can be used more widely across all the social prescribing areas that we have because I think if we can embed this early, then it will have such a huge impact and it's not going to be something that has a sudden result in the next year or two. That's, that's always the difficulty with these things, isn't it? It's long-term and people aren't necessarily going to fund things that perhaps are going to take 15, 20 years to show really strong evidence, but you're already seeing good evidence and you're showing very clearly impact straight away. And I think that's the important thing that I'm taking away from this. So thank you very much and I think we're hearing a lot from the other people presenting as well, that there is high impact with this sort of work and that is so important. Thank you.
We have two panel members who would like to answer as well?
Yeah, I think it's really important to reflect on the national picture around the provision of support for children and young people's mental health in schools. So you'll have probably heard, it's quite a hot topic at the moment, mental health support teams in schools is what the government are looking to expand over the next four years. At the moment, coverage sits at about 55% of schools can access a mental health support team by 2030, we're hoping that will reach 100%. However, us and I know colleagues in Suffolk as well that are rolling out the mental health support team programme are consistently talking to national and regional colleagues about the limitations of the mental health support teams in school programme. It's very much a cognitive behavioural therapy or CBT focus in terms of the staff that are in those teams and I think certainly locally, our approach to the community youth work pilot that I spoke about is expanding that and aligning that on a neighbourhood footprint to our mental health support teams in schools, purely because we know a lot of young people A, choose not to engage in a CBT approach, there's quite a lot of homework involved and that is quite unattractive to some young people, but equally the more holistic approach around youth work, I think, and kind of that personalised care approach is really working for individuals. And I think collectively, having choice that young people and families can kind of tap into is only a good thing. So certainly I agree that I think as we expand, as we learn more from projects like yourselves and the pilot in Norfolk and Wavney, we need to think about how we're collectively using our resources and our assets to make a neighbourhood approach, a community approach to meeting the needs of children and families that doesn't always look sort of medical, because often that is the case, as young people don't always need a medical or a clinical intervention. Sometimes it's just a case of linking them in with the things that they're passionate about and that in itself is enough, which is brilliant.
Councillor Lockington?
Thank you Chair. It's been lovely to listen to you and you know, it's good to have role models like you that can support people. But talking about you're based in schools, but one of the things I think you've mentioned was that they worked in the evening. Did you not, yeah. So what we are probably missing is what we used to have more of youth clubs in the evenings and so on, which you know, and I know sadly the county council stopped supporting many youth clubs in some years ago in order to save budget and I don't think that was a good move because I think it just comes back to bite us when we, when we don't support workers that can work with young people. So do you have special evening workers in your setup?
Yeah, thank you so much and I wholeheartedly agree. I think youth clubs should be more available. I think those spaces for our young people to be able to go, there is a safe space where youth workers or other mental health support is available to them, I think is really important. But from the Mix ourselves, and we are a youth work charity, so we have a number of other projects that run under that umbrella, not just my project. So as a sort of an internal partnership working, we work really closely with those. And yes, members of my team will attend those drop-in spaces as well. So we open up at least three times a week here at the Mix and the fact that we've got two centres now, we have the centre in Stone Market and we've also opened up a little drop-in hut over at Needham Market as well, which was based on feedback from the local community that said actually, for those that, you know, Needham Market is very close to Stone Market, but it's still a bit of a trek for young people who, who don't drive and find it perhaps a bit intimidating to get on buses or the sort of public transport networks as well. So we're really lucky that we've got those two spaces where yeah, youth workers from my team will go along and we encourage our young people that we see in the high schools and not just through the sort of one-to-one work that we do, but just from the wider school network to come along and see us, we'll have space. We've got pool and I have got very good at pool, I wasn't very good, but I am now very good at pool as a result of those young people teaching me table tennis, board games, or perhaps sometimes have other partners that come along, just as a bit of a, they'll come and engage with the young people whilst they're there as well. We've had people from Brave Futures come along, we've had the local criminal exploitation hubs come along.
And we've had the local criminal exploitation hubs come along and spend the evening with us as well. So there's lots of opportunity there for that kind of partnership working and to be able to grow that as well. But yeah, definitely I agree that there should be more.
Councillor McLaren.
Thank you, Chair. Well, this is a subject very close to my heart. I happen to have the other school in my patch. So first of all, well done to the teams because a lot of hard work. But I just want to say to everyone, I mix with some of the young people that are having the benefit of what youth social prescribing is about and it has made a big difference. If I can just do a, state an example. We had a young student who really found that after school she couldn't mix with people. And the youth worker met with her, I used to see them. She used to meet with her, we have a supermarket near the school. And of course, all the young people got the supermarket after they'd been to school. And she used to go with her and help her mix with her other students from the school. And there's been a very big, I've seen the difference and so it does work. So well done.
Yeah, thank you. That's really great to hear. And I'm really pleased that you're able to kind of see the benefits of the work that we've been able to do as well. And I think just, I also want to comment on the fact that, yes, we are embedded within the school, but the feedback that we've had so often is that we're in bright turquoise lanyards that are different from those school staff. We turn up in jeans, we're not school staff. And that has been the real key for young people to be able to approach us. And even if it's not necessarily that we get them into an activity or that we get them into some sort of specialized support, it even is just that little bit of support that might just be that we go outside and wait at the end of the school day with them for the bus, just helping increase that confidence, just that little bit more, rather than what colleagues have already referred to previously of going on to a waiting list that they might not necessarily need. It's just that little additional nudge that they need to be able to sort of realize their own confidence, which I think has sadly been lost as a result of the pandemic. And we're still seeing those effects even five, six years on from it. So thank you so much.
Councillor Rowe.
Yeah, it sounds really good and I'm quite happy that it's in my patch. It's good to know what this guy are. I was wondering whether there's anything which connects with home educated kids because I know you've kind of, it's been mentioned about kind of particularly neurodivergent children can find it a massive struggle to actually get on that school and so they end up being home educated because that's simpler. But yeah, does the project link in with that at all or is it potential to expand, link in?
Yeah, no. So there is more potential to expand on that. Again, within the Mix itself, we have quite a good link with home educated groups and we run a home educated drop-in space. Again, sort of running the same activities as we would on a normal drop-in. But actually, my team have started to work more closely with young people that are finding it difficult to access education and will work with those emotionally school-based avoiders. So again, we're starting to sort of reach out to those young people a little bit more because sadly they will be ones that perhaps fall through the net and fall off people's radar. So again, we want to try and encourage that as best we can and keep them on our radar so that at least they can kind of still get into something that will help with that socialization piece. But it means the beauty of the work that we do, again, not being school staff, we are that kind of independent space. And the beauty of the building that we have in Stone Market as well, it's a neutral ground. So if it's something physical that they feel that they can't physically step foot into the building at school, they're able to come and meet us and we've started to sort of do those appointments with parents, with young people outside of that school base. And then we can kind of, again, being one foot in the community, one foot in the school, we can then kind of be that link between the school as well and work closely with those partners to help encourage young people into that education setting or look at ways that we can help best get the use out of that home education space as well.
Members, do you have any more questions? Councillor Lloyd.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say thank you for, it was a really insightful presentation. I think we hear a lot about in society about early years and what we're doing in early years to kind of improve the next generation. But I think what you're doing is almost triaging at the other end, is you've got those kind of kids that are really in the middle that have almost been lost by the pandemic. And so from our perspective, what can we do as councillors to promote awareness really of what you're doing in these programs?
Yeah, thank you. And I think it was sort of talked about earlier as well, about how can you kind of help support promoting all of these social prescribing programs? Because I think social prescribing is the way forward and if we can help reduce the sort of waiting lists going into those more specialized services, into our social care teams. We have the social care team that are in the building with us upstairs and I see how busy they are. So if there's opportunity to sort of help our colleagues there, then absolutely. I'm very open for, you know, anybody, anybody in this space and beyond, to come along and see the work that we're doing. I think you can really see when you come along and chat to my team, they are all so, so passionate about the work that they do and really advocate for those young people. So it's more connections. And for us at the moment, the priority is securing that funding beyond next year. So anybody that knows, anybody that might be interested in helping to secure some of that funding and investing more because I think this is the way forward. And we have already had schools outside of the program reach out to us and say, we've heard that you've got youth link workers in other high schools, we want a slice of the action. So we're hoping that we can kind of expand the project as well because I think the need is there. So if you're able to kind of help link us in with any of that and other learning as well, if there's things, you know, looking at this of LGBTQ plus groups, if there's stuff around home education where we can learn more. I'm all for learning. I love learning. I love linking out with other partners. So again, for me, it's just that kind of connectivity space. But please feel free to kind of share and talk about the stories that you've heard today because I think they are really lovely.
Councillor Thompson.
So do we have the, your contact details or? Right, fine.
Yep, Kelly. Just one more thing really to build on that. I think in response to your question, Councillor Lloyd, it's not always particularly popular to invest in something that the benefits may either never be seen or realized or might not be realized for ten or twenty or thirty years. However, there are plenty of evidence-based articles out there suggesting for every one pound you invest in initiatives like this, initiatives in the early years, you get at least three pounds back. Your return on investment is strong. So I think it's about using your platform to talk about that actually and to talk about the benefits of investing early and investing to save actually in the future and recognizing that sometimes the benefits are softer than purely financial. If we can create networks, if we can create connections and if we can create relationships, we don't only benefit the health service, we benefit the criminal justice service, the employment sector as well. We know many of the young people missing education or even those young people in education but don't have particularly good outcomes from education, go on to be those that are not in education, training or employment as they reach adulthood. And then they become those that have mental health difficulties, often significant and severe mental health difficulties into adulthood, where we know the impact of that in terms of medication and continued sustainment and treatment is much, much more costly than offering a brief intervention that meets their needs and provides them with the tools. So for me, it's being able to use your platform to communicate that and to actually recognize that benefits don't necessarily need to be realized within either a political term or short term because they do. When they're intergenerational, they have far, far reaching outcomes that go decades into the future.
Thank you very much. Any more comments, questions? Okay, thank you all. We will now move to the recommendations on page thirty-one in your agenda pack. And based on what we have heard today, do committee members have any recommendations they think the committee should make, please? And if you don't have any additional thoughts, we just go with the recommendations on page thirty-one. But Councillor Lockington, you just want to say something, please.
Yes, I just wonder, there's this report you've got coming out in a couple of days' time. So, you know, it would be useful for us to actually have a look at that report if that's possible.
Can arrange that. Yeah, thank you. Does the chairman wish to, no, sorry, I'm so sorry. That is me. So do panel members want to make any comments on the recommendations? Or any other comments with regard to what's written down on page thirty-one? Nope. Okay, then I would say we do all agree to the recommendations. I thank you very much for coming here today and for all your contributions. They were all splendid. And thank you very much for your good work. Keep continuing. And we shall see you in the future again. Thank you very much. Members, would you like to have a break or are you happy to continue? Who would like to continue? Okay, let's continue. Okay. Yeah, okay. All right, okay, let's continue. So we are moving to agenda number eight and it is, this one provides the committee with information about joint health scrutiny arrangements with neighboring local authorities and the role of NHS board observers. And we seek confirmation of appointments and nominations to vacancies. So.
We had, yeah, a meeting or with the Norfolk, because it seems to be cancelled, has it? Or has it been moved? I've missed it.
Theresa is coming in on.
Hello. Yeah, I think there was due to be a meeting of Norfolk HOSK on the third, but I can check that out for you after this meeting and let you know. Okay.
I mean, if we, I mean, the chairman was supposed to go with me and cancel that, well, probably.
Oh, you're talking about the proposed joint meeting regarding the consultation on out-of-hour services in the Norfolk and Wavney patch. And yes, that has been cancelled. The consultation has been ended due to the changes that are taking place within the NHS.
Right.
So yeah, those proposals are currently off the table and there won't be a meeting to discuss.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
Okay, thanks.
Members, I need to have your confirmation for the following committees. So the Norfolk and Norfolk Health Overview Select Committee will be with councillor Edward Beck. Is that right? And councillor Edward Thompson as co-opted non-voting members in the Norfolk Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee. And we have appointed two named substitutes who will be councillor Keith Robinson and councillor Bayard. In their absence, I hope they agree, but I believe they agreed in the past. Yeah. Yeah. And then we have the Suffolk and North East Essex Joint Health Scrutiny Committee. And we have appointed councillors Inga Lockington and Mary McLaren and Christine Shaw. They will be on it. And there's one vacancy which I'm quite happy to fulfill. And to fill, and we have three named substitutes who at the moment is councillor Beck. Is there anybody else who would like to substitute this committee? You would do this? Perfect. Thank you so much. Anybody else?
When are the meetings usually?
Pardon?
When are the meetings usually?
This Joint Health Scrutiny Committee is set up, it meets on an ad hoc basis only, primarily to undertake any statutory scrutiny of proposals for service reconfigurations. So it doesn't meet on a regular basis, but would be called in the event we had a consultation that covered Suffolk and North East Essex. In light of the comments from Richard Watson earlier, that is probably not going to be needed going forward. But it may meet, for example, if there were changes resulting from something at ESNF at the Ipswich and Colchester hospitals, which would affect residents in both counties. So it's an ad hoc meeting essentially.
If there's no one else who has to be there, I will be a substitute. I just don't know as ad hoc whether I'd be able to, but I can be asked.
Brilliant. Thank you very much, Councillor Rowe. All right. Therefore, and we have linked members observers for the NHS board meetings. For the Norfolk and Suffolk NHS Foundation Trust, we have councillor Thompson. And Suffolk and North East Essex Integrated Care Partnership. Is there somebody who would like to be observer on that one? It is. Yeah, we just leave it then for the time being. Yeah? Okay, thank you very much, councillor Thompson. All right. Which leaves us now to move on to agenda number nine. With standing the reports from board observers.
My membership, my membership of the West Suffolk Foundation, because I do, as you know, we're both on the future, observers on the Future Systems Board. But on the Foundation Trust, they meet in Newmarket every other month and I've not been able to go and they don't have any online attendance. You've actually got to attend physically, which is, yeah. So I was wondering if anybody else that live near.
Yeah, Councillor McLaren, thank you very much for letting us know. I think the best idea is then to send an email out and to all the members and see what they say. Thank you. Do we have any reports from board observers? Yeah, Councillor McLaren?
Thank you. I'm an observer on the Future Systems Board for the new West Suffolk Hospital. I've done it quite a long time now and I sent to you before the meeting a report. I think we've got to be very careful what we actually discuss in public. I give you go to the chairman, you go to that meeting anyway. A lot of the subject matter is probably not for general release. So if you would just know, and you've hopefully read my report that I sent around. I try and do one every time we have a meeting. So, but it's looking good, I think. They're on the next stage, not the quite, but they are on the next stage of going towards, I mean, setting up a contract with a developer is a good part of the program because it looks as if, well, we're going to have a new hospital. So if you just accept that, members, that what I sent was what happened. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor McLaren. I acknowledge to have received the report and we acknowledge as well that it's at the moment not for public yet. And now we are going to move to agenda number 10. It is the information bulletin. So actually, it's written down there as well that we do not discuss the items of in the information bulletin. But if you have any questions, can you please raise them with the officer contact shown at the end of the item? However, if there are matters within the bulletin you feel should be considered further by the committee, please raise these under the Forward Work Programme discussion. Now we can move on to agenda number 11, which is the Health Scrutiny Forward Work Programme. It was decided in the past that we should maybe have a look at mental health again, because they will have their CQC results coming out shortly. And therefore, we thought it might be a good idea to invite them again in October at our next meeting. And as well, the dental services in Suffolk, because we feel we would like to see some progress there. Members, do you have any comments, any further wishes or anything you would like to say from here? Nope. Yeah, councillor Lockington?
Just, I want to state in the future that maybe in January, you know, we look at the pharmacies again, because I think we need to keep an eye on how our pharmacies are doing, because one here that some of them are struggling, you know. So it would be good, because it is important as pharmacists are supposed to also provide more and more sort of health service, you know, we need to be sure that they are sustainable.
Thank you very much. I think this is a very important point and I believe it's actually, it's there exactly. I believe it is actually on it. But no, it's a very important point and thank you for pointing it out again. Any other comments, please? councillor Lloyd.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just wondering on the Forward Work Programme, the health and housing, I think, is seemingly down for September, or at least on this, the page 61. I'm just wondering whether it's worth covering, considering the government's drastically increased housing targets for the next five years, whether it's worth considering healthcare in relation to expansion of housing and provision? Because I know, I know in my patch, there's concern about the ICB wanting to expand the facilities at Stradbroke Medical Centre. But actually, the facilities are currently only being used two days a week. And there's some disquiet about that. So I think maybe it's worth looking at housing in relation to capacity.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just to say, on page 61, health and housing is a matter that's coming to Health and Wellbeing Board in September. So it might be worth picking that up when it comes to see what's covered in there before taking it forward, if that helps.
councillor Lockington?
We did have the sort of planning committees here from local authorities and the health, you know, talking about a couple of meetings ago, talking about how they plan for the health within the local plan, you know, when you had lots of housing coming in. So we could maybe look at that report, whether there's something we need to look at, the recommendation from that, to see whether that's something that we need to, and then we could always ask for an information bulletin.
Yep, I do agree with that, councillor Lockington, thank you very much. But it is a very good point, councillor Lloyd, definitely worth mentioning. Any other comments, any questions, any ideas? Nope. Well, then I would like to point out that our next date of our Health Scrutiny Committee meeting is on the 8th of October at 10 o'clock here in this King Edmund Chamber. And I thank you very much all for your comments, for your participation and for coming, of course. I should have said coming first, participation and comments. Never mind, wrong order. Thank you so much for coming and have a safe journey home. Please do take everything you brought with you home, rubbish into the bins and switch off your microphones and that's it. Thank you very much. Bye bye.